Ladies and gentlemen, it's six o'clock and I'd like to call the Columbia County Planning Commission monthly or bi-weekly meeting to order for March 18th of 2020. If you'd stand with us, Commissioner Wilder will lead us in our invocation and Commissioner Futch will lead us in the pledge.
Y'all back with us. Lord, we thank you for this beautiful day. We thank you so much that this weather, that look might have been coming our way, went around us, can't be safe here. And thank you for all the very many blessings you've put into this county, this state, this country that we live in. Blessings you look over our meeting tonight and look over what we do, hopefully guide us that we do the right thing for everyone that comes before us tonight. All these things in Jesus' name.
And if I could please remind you to turn your cellphones on vibrate or turn them off, please. We do have, excuse me, a full quorum here tonight with all five commissioners present. Gentlemen, you've had a chance to review the minutes from the March 4th meeting. If there are no amendments or changes or additions to that document, I need a motion for approval.
So moved.
You hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Motion to approve the minutes passes 5-0. We'd have one item that we need to add to the agenda tonight. Mr. Vice Chair?
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to add temporary use authorization to item H2B1.
All right, are there any other additions to the agenda? If not, we'll need a motion for approval with the added temporary use permit?
So moved.
You hear a second?
Second.
All in favor? Motion to approve the amended agenda passes 5-0. Before we begin, I'd like to take a moment to clarify that the planning commission is a recommending body to the Columbia County Board of Commissioners. The decisions made on rezoning and variance requests tonight will be forwarded to the commissioners for final action on April 6th, 2021, in these chambers at 6:00 P.M. If you wish to address the board of commissioners at their meeting, please see Ms. Kara Harden and she'll give you a request to speak for them to submit, to get on the agenda for that meeting. We're less formal in these chambers. I know I see some familiar faces out there, but some of you may not have been in here before. In our public hearing, we've got a couple of items and if you'd like to give comment either for or against or have some additional information you'd like to, for us to consider on those items, please raise your hand. We'll ask you to come to the dais and spend three to five minutes giving us your information. There's also an opportunity at the end of the meeting, if you have some input you'd like to give us on something other than what's on the agenda, same process, raise your hand, we'll call you up and would love to have you give us whatever information you'd like us to receive. That being said, let's move on to our first item on the agenda tonight. Mr. Butler, an architectural review for Grand Oaks in Evans.
Thanks, this is a request for an architectural review, basically across the street over on Ron Reagan Drive and 732 North Biller Road. Our car is undeveloped. As part of the rezoning, they had to have their elevations reviewed by staff and also planning commission. That's what we're doing tonight. This is location of the property again, just down the street at Ron Reagan Drive and also Williamsburg Way, North Biller Road. So as part of the rezoning, I saw what was presented with it. Again, this is a selection of what was presented, this isn't everything. Again, there's quite a few more photos that were presented at that time. Part of the design intent was looks at the building massing, various materials, textures, colors, also building accent elements. So it's kind of the defining features of a lot of these buildings. This is what was presented at the PUD as part of the architectural review presented tonight. This is presented by the architect and the applicant. Again, to kind of see the overall design intent, where they're getting their ideas from, what they're drawing from, you know, and what they're going to present to the commission this evening. I will be looking at basically four of the buildings on the site. We have building one, actually, hold on a second, those one, two, three, and four. We'll be looking at those individually. Again, the building here is the mixed-use building, the other buildings are all apartments. So we'll start with the architecture review of the mixed-use building itself. Again, this does have, as you can see here, you have stone that's here, brick, and then fiber cement panels, essentially a synthetic stucco. One of the things that is really good about this design, these corner balconies definitely evoke the Maybaum Building. The materials are used throughout with the other projects on, within the plaza area. So getting drawn from what's already there to have those materials and also have their own design behind it as well. One of the things with the roofs, these are flat roofs, but you have a variation between different heights. And also, as we'll see here in a moment, Ron Reagan Drive does have a pretty good grade change as it goes down toward North Biller Road. One of the things we asked them to work on is to address, you know, how that, how that's going to step as it goes down and providing more of a downtown feel with the area. You can see that, but best illustrated here with these walk-ups that are here. It gives it more of a, you know, downtown flavor, more of a walkable community instead of having, you know, just a door or, you know, no doors at all along the entire frontage. Again, the same materials used here, but again, the stone has gone away. The stone's really only on the mixed-use building with the commercial sections. Again, you see, it's actually quite, it's illustrated well here. That definitely evokes the Maybaum Building, the corner of that building too. If we move on to the second or the third building here, this really shows the elevation change. You can see that at the bottom here, that's, I think it's at least nine or 10 steps going up to the units there. Again, same materials used, there's really no variation beyond those three material types. And lastly, we have the, this is on Williamsburg Way. Again, a little different, this one does have more of a traditional apartment where it has an internal, it's an internal walk inside of it with the stairs and all of that. This is on, this is on more of a, I don't really want to say a lesser frontage, but again, it is one that already has some development on it. Not really intended to have, you know, full downtown feel, but again, it does have the gates here to kind of have security, but also provide, you know, that walkability with it. Our team will be going more in-depth with their presentation and I'll kind of leave some of those elements to them. This does include the pool, this kind of gives you an idea of the, during the day and at night, kind of what it could look like. Overall, staff thinks that the applicant has met the intent of their PUD and recommends approval of the architectural review for Grand Oaks at Evans. I'd like to staff for recommendation.
Thank you, sir. Gentlemen, any questions to staff? This is not a public hearing, however, Mr. Mills, I see you in the crowd. Is there anything you'd like to add for consideration for Southeastern? Would you like to, okay, absolutely, come forward and give us your name and address and you can make whatever presentation you'd like.
Good evening, my name is Ellen Garland. I'm the founding principal of Silver Studio Architects. We're the architect and designer for the project. Your staff did a great job of summarizing everything. We tried to take a lot of contextual influence from what you guys already have developed in this area, tried to match, you know, as was stated, a lot of the massing, the brick, the coloration, the materials. Overall, I think the building will fit in really well with what you have already established as sort of your architectural context. I'm happy to answer any questions or we can run through some of our slides. We have a couple at the end here. Most of the slides have already been presented with the renderings. These renderings are coming from our actual working model on the project, so this is true form of what we expect to build. And at the end, I know there was some question about just making sure, we can go back one and I'll just speak to this building. Materials and everything are the same, we did a little different rendering style on this, but just to touch on that, we do have through corridors on this building primarily because of the, it's a little larger step in the building to make sure that we have accessible access with the grade change on this particular building, but same materials, just a different rendering style. And we did include some example projects, just wanted to represent Southeastern's ability to carry through on our design intent. Some of these are projects that I've done with them in the past and I can speak to their dedication to putting forth the product that they showed at the onset. So you can see through these that the renderings in the buildings come out very similar, very high quality, like we're missing our rendering there. This is one I actually worked on with them, so you can see the rendering to reality, the real stayed true to the design, you know, they carry it through very well. More of that same building. Can really hardly tell the rendering from the, from the real life picture, so. These are previous apartments that they have built.
What kind of timeframe are you looking at with this project about?
Any other questions?
And that's the four buildings that we're looking at the architectural review on? Twenty-four months on that?
Actually, I asked. Okay.
Gentlemen, any other questions? Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
All right, this is not a public hearing, so I'll need a motion to approve, deny, or to table.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to approve the architectural review for Grand Oaks Evans.
Do you hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Motion to approve the architectural renderings passes 5-0. Mr. Butler, file HB, H2B1, temporary use permit for tax map parcel 042089 Charlie.
This is temporary use over on 1228 Lewisville Road. Currently it's an RA residential agricultural, requests for travel during construction of a permit home. This is location of the property on the east side of Lewisville Road. And again, the zoning, it's all currently zoned RA around it, just S1 kind of up at the intersection of old unit in Lewisville. And the site plan showing the camper behind the house, or the house itself, all over the fire, I believe a week or several weeks ago. That's why they, that's the status of request for the, and staff recommends approval of the request.
Okay, gentlemen, any questions to staff? Okay, I'll need a, this is not a public hearing, so we need a motion to approve, deny, or to table.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the temporary use authorization.
You hear a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Approve carries 5-0. Ms. Montgomery, conceptual plan for 1915 William Few Parkway.
Yes, sir, this is a concept plan for the property at 1915 William Few Parkway. It was currently zoned R1 at the time of development of the report. Since then, the BOC has approved the R2 rezoning Tuesday night, so it is now zoned R2, single family residential. And the concept plan is based on that zoning. This is the location of the parcel on the north side of William Few Parkway, adjacent to Uche Creek. And the existing conditions at the site, we saw this same property a couple of weeks ago for the planning commission review, it has some fairly steep topography and a good amount of floodplain and environmental conditions on the site that they are having to deal with. The concept plan includes 75 lots with a single point of access on William Few. A left turn lane in and a right turn deceleration lane are anticipated at the entrance. The left turn lane construction is likely going to impact the floodplain as well as the culvert and bridge on William Few Parkway, so there's going to be some additional permitting and additional cost and time involved in developing that. The road layout is fairly straightforward, one main road coming all the way in. That is definitely a cul-de-sac longer than 700 feet, so that does require a specific planning commission approval. In this case, there's really nothing else for them to connect to on adjacent properties. Their surrounding parcels are all developed subdivisions. And with the topography, it's likely that trying to do the loop roads or connect them would be, would be fairly complicated. Traffic had some initial concerns about this particular corner. This is actually a revised version to address those concerns. They've been in touch with the engineer here and are confident that the geometry of that curve will be acceptable at preliminary plat, possibly with modification, but they're confident it can be worked out. This project will also have to comply with the revised requirements of the fire code. This project does include a note on the concept plan that they do intend to install sprinkler systems in all of the homes to meet those requirements. Water and sewer service are both required with this zoning district and are easily accessible to this property. There's an existing water main on William Few and the sewer line is in Uche Creek just to the west. There are some possible revisions. Stormwater expressed concern that there's currently only one stormwater pond shown with this project and with the topography, there may be some additional ponds needed that may lead to some changes in the lot count as they move forward with the full engineering. The site is expected to be masqueraded, so there is a 50-foot buffer around the entire project, which is shown on the concept. The zoning conditions also anticipated a required connection to the greenway, which is shown on the concept as well. And staff is recommending approval, subject to the interdepartmental comments to be addressed prior to the preliminary plat.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Gentlemen, any questions to staff?
So there was no, this is, this conceptual plan is the only thing they could do, they couldn't loop it around. Said that there was some difficulties with looping it around, can you describe that a little bit more? I mean, I get it, there's wetlands right there, but...
And there's a lot of topography that they're dealing with as well. I mean, I wouldn't say that this plan is the only thing they can do, it is definitely the layout that's probably going to give them the best lot count and the best ability to develop the property.
All right, any other questions? Thank you. This is not a public hearing, so I'll need a motion to approve, deny, or to table.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the conceptual plan for 1915 William Few Parkway.
Do you hear a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Motion to approve carries 5-0. Mr. Butler, individual plat for Eric Yorg and Stanley Perhanish.
This is a request for individual plat, 1635 Old Avenue Harlem Highway, 29.57 acres total. Currently split zone RA and N1, lot count is six on the lots and recommending approval of the request. Location of the property on the east side of Old Avenue Harlem Highway. Again, this currently splits, unlike we talked about, one of the things that you'll be seeing next meeting is a request to rezone that area that is split zoned to basically RA for the entirety of it. These two pieces here, whoops, came before y'all, like in February, I believe, to also get rid of the split zoning as well with the M1 there. Again, it does, it meets a lot of structure for both RA and M1, so it's one the plat can be approved, but there is a known issue with a handful of the lots that will be created currently. Again, this shows the lots, parcel one would be entirely M1, then you'd have this across the other two, of two and three would be zoned M1 as well. There is, within the staff report, there is a, several comments from the health department regarding soils. That is being, that is a known fact from, with the developer, is also being addressed with a level four soil survey. So it's, again, one of those things that is a known issue that will be handled at that point. Staff recommend approval of the plat.
And there's no curb cut scheduled for Swent Road on parcel three?
Well, yeah, there is, they'd have access here, will have a driveway there as well.
Okay, so there'll be two driveways?
There could be, but again, probably just going to have one shared one.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions? This is not a public hearing, so I'll need a motion to approve, deny, or to table.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve H2E1 individual plat.
You hear a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Approve carries 5-0. Mr. Butler, individual plat for the Kroger Company.
This is located off Bluegrass Trail over the Kroger on Lewiston, creates a 1.054 acre parcel, Z2. The only reason you guys understand this is because they used a minor plat back in 2018 to create, actually, let's go to the next slide, this location, they created these three parcels at one time with a minor plat, so now they're in the five-year mortuary room. They're creating a parcel here, go to the next, this is, shows you the zoning, again, Z2. They're creating this parcel for development of, this out parcel, excuse me, for development of a building with three restaurants on it. Currently in planned review, not done yet with planned review, but again, staff is recommending approval of the plat.
Gentlemen, any questions to staff? Not a public hearing, so I need a motion to approve, deny, or to table.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the individual plat for Kroger Company off Bluegrass Trail.
Do you hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Approve carries 5-0. We'll move into the public hearing portion of our meeting tonight. Ms. Mystery, file RZ21-03-06, and I understand that the applicant has asked to have this tabled, but since we have advertised for a public hearing, we'll go ahead and hear the public. If there's anyone like to speak either for or against this, just raise your hand and we'll, we'll call you up and let you go ahead and, and give us your input and I'm not sure we have a date in mind yet that they would like to table to?
It's probably a month away, but you can ask the applicant.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir, this is a plan revision and the location is 4502 Guilford Court, the .4 acres and the current zoning is planned genetic development and the request is a major revision to reduce setbacks. This is the location and Stratford is off Hardy McManus Road. This is the zoning, so the PUD is Stratford and surrounding zoning is R2 and R1. This is a close-up of the aerial which shows the existing house and it's basically got two fronts on the side and the addition or accessory building is going in this corner This is the plat of the lot and you can see that there is actually a double line on either side of Alsbury Road. That was a 10-foot strip that's for the HOA. This is a subdivision plat of that area, which is Guilford Court and Alsbury Drive. And this is a close-up of the area with the utilities that shows up on maps online. The blue line is the water line, the green is the sewer line, which is running on the side property line. And, yeah, you can see the 10-foot HOA strip there. There is some landscaping and trees further down, but there's nothing in this, this part of the street. This is a proposal by the applicant. It is an accessory building and the building permit was submitted last year. The measurements on the transmittal were 44 by 26 feet and is a one-story building that's stick-built, it will have brick and siding on it. We did do a site visit there a couple of weeks ago just to have a look at the site and measure out the space for the, for the addition. These are the photographs of the sites, you see the property, the first one on the top left is actually the corner where Alsbury Court and Guilford Court meet. The two bottom photographs are from inside the property looking back towards Alsbury Road. And then you see the green flags where the sewer line is marked out, which is just inside of this property line. And there's a view of Alsbury Drive. And the applicant needs the setbacks reduced to allow the building that he wants. Based on the site visit, he has agreed that he might need to reduce the size of the building because of the buildable area. And staff has requested a as-built plat to show the existing structures and the property of the buildable area so he can revise his application for his building permit. And so the applicant has requested to table that until he gets the as-built for us to review.
Thank you. Gentlemen, any questions to staff? Okay, is the applicant here? Yes, sir, please come forward, give us your name and home address.
Eric Carter, 4502 Guilford Court, here in Evans.
Okay, anything else you'd like us to consider?
Yes, sir, I spoke with Ms. Mystery, she helped me with setting up as far as getting all the information to her. The only reason I'm asking for an extension is because we just recently found out they requested me to have a land survey. Fortunately, I couldn't find a company that can get a survey done before this meeting, so we're trying to get that completed so I can get the... And also potentially planning to reduce the size of the building so that they fit within the size of the...
So would you like to, to table this till, I'd say, the, either the 415 meeting or the 5, the May 6th meeting?
Yes, sir, and I get...
Which, which one would you prefer?
Probably the, what's the date again, sir?
Either, either April 15th or May 6th.
April 15th, sir.
April 15th?
Company said they can come out later this week.
Somebody lined up now?
Yes, sir, I have someone, company come out to do the survey, they say they can take about two weeks to get everything, all the paperwork as prescribed in the format.
Okay, gentlemen, any other questions?
I've got a couple of questions. Are you, are you building this yourself or are you hiring a contractor?
Building myself, sir.
Okay, and is there going to be any electricity or anything? What was the, what ultimately do you want to use?
Basically used for storage, for storage.
Storage, okay. And there was, there was some notes in the narrative regarding the Hways approval of the request, that things had changed from the original. Do you plan on getting the approval on the up, on the new...
Yes, sir. So originally I had submitted the request and there's, I still needed variance and go through the process to get that, the length of your process tonight. So we ended up getting that done, I get Hways approval, so I get with them once I get all the information I need from the survey, planning to reduce the size, more room in my backyard in addition to...
Great, thank you.
You know what size the building's going to be when you reduce it?
No, sir, I haven't, I don't quite know yet, I'm looking, going from 44 feet to approximately 35 to 36. Course of length, but still about, yes, sir, about 26, but over to closer behind.
What's the height going to be?
Sorry, sir?
What's the height going to be?
Standard eight, eight foot on the side, the highest point, about 12 and a half, 13 feet at the tallest point.
Okay.
Have a pad already poured or you're going to pour a pad once you get everything lined up?
Once I get everything lined up, I will pour the pad. I haven't, we haven't done any work other than, I had a shed, had it before, had a large 16-foot shed in the back before and I just had it removed, hopes that I can move forward.
You're not running power. Mr. Scarborough, what permitting and inspections will, will Mr. Carter have to, to be subject to for this project? Mr. Carter, if you want to sit down, you can.
Yeah, he'll, he'll need to come to our office, like I said, and provide us with the drawings and all, and we'll give you a list of inspections because we'll have a footing inspection prior to you pouring any concrete. We'll need to make sure we take a look at that because then we'll need to know those property lines, they will need to be demarcated so that we can pull the tape, make sure where we needed to be on the site so that it's not too clear. Because once you get within five feet of that property line, we've got fire codes that are going to come into play depending on where that lies, whether you have any openings in that, whether it be doors, windows, anything like that. And we'll help walk you through that and your inspector will become a very good friend of yours so that you don't have to come before these gentlemen again, so, and call on us as much as you, much as you need. That's just, it just makes things life easier for you and for us in the future. So yes, we'll need a, you know, that footing coming on up, framing of it, on up and so forth, and they'll keep you straight on inspections you'll need to email into us so we can get out of them. We'll come out within a 24-hour period, email it into us. All right?
Thank you, sir.
I just, I mean, I think it's the only, I just want to add, just quickly, that in my time of being here, there has been some issues where people have tried to do themselves, came in and asked for certain, you know, got approvals on certain things, but got outside of those approvals and ultimately had to... I strongly encourage you to work closely with Mr. Scarborough and his staff to prevent that happening.
All right, thank you, sir. Yes, sir, I saw you raise your hand, you'd like to come forward and give us some information and give us your name and home address, please.
My name's Tim Cook, I live at 4581 Alsbury Court. My home is directly behind this home. I have two concerns, one of them is, I was concerned with the height of the building, how much it was going to, privacy fence. Looked at the plans on here, but I couldn't really tell how tall it was going to be. This, this home backs up to the main... Concerned, this, this home backs up to the main entrance road into Stratford, Alsbury Drive. I was concerned about the height that it was going to protrude above the privacy fence. And the second one was really a question or a concern about I guess it's a public notice sign or I call it a rezoning sign. It's not what it really is when you have to put a, you know, a sign out there. The sign was only out there maybe one or two days and I was concerned about that. I didn't know if there's a part amount of time that the sign has to sit out there for, for public notices, there's a certain amount of days it's got to be.
So we put the sign out fifteen days before the, the hearing. It is supposed to stay out there. I don't know who would have removed it, but it was not the county. It, it is intended to stay out there.
I mean, I wasn't keeping track of it on the calendar, but I would say probably a maximum of two days. So my concern with that was the purpose of that sign, I believe, is so residents and other homeowners can become aware. I was just concerned.
When was it first advertised? Because this is the second time this has been on the agenda.
No, that's not correct. This is the first hearing.
Okay, this is, I thought we had it on the agenda one time and we, and we removed it because staff had gone out and was doing an onsite visit. Were you just having discussions then? So there was nothing advertised back then?
It's not been on the agenda before tonight.
Well, it's, it's requested to be postponed, so it'll be out again.
Right, okay. But it's supposed to be out for two weeks?
Right, it goes out fifteen days.
Is it currently gone? Ah.
Deal with it.
I just, I just wanted to bring up the concern and then my first concern of height of it.
What's the code on the height?
Well, based on what has been submitted, and again, that may change a little bit. It appears that his trust design. I think that's about, it looks like it's about six feet in overall height. So if it was eight plus six, you're looking at about a fourteen foot max height. Six or eight foot fence, you know, you're going to be, it's going to be above a little bit, certainly.
But as far as county requirements, is that, we have some say in that or is that strictly his HOA that's going to?
And the, and the HOA review will, will accept or decline that height?
That, that could be part of their decision making.
Thank you, sir.
That was all the comments I had.
Yeah. Mr. Carter, do you have something else you'd like to add? Yes, sir, please come forward, if you don't mind.
The height, like so my yard kind of sits until like, like my backyard sits whole. So my, I have a privacy fence that's six feet and approximately like highest point be between twelve to fourteen feet. And so you actually only see approximately about of the fence, I mean, of the one most is actually built. But at the same time, it'd be closer to the house approximately from the actual road. I was requesting originally is approximately five twenty nine from the actual road, from the curb of the road. But I don't, I don't hope someone seeing into my backyard.
All right. Thanks, sir. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here that would like to speak either for or against this particular rezoning? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and accept a motion to approve, deny, or to table until April fifteenth, twenty twenty one.
Mr. Chairman, real quick, just as a point of clarification, the sign would have been posted on March third.
I believe we actually took it out March second because we took it out when we did the site visit. So it went out a day early.
Yeah. Typically they go out on that Wednesday, two weeks ahead of the meeting date, so.
Is there, is, that's on the outside of the fence?
Correct.
And if that, is that portion maintained by maybe an HOA?
That was a question we're going to find out.
Yeah.
Who, who took the sign, where it went, that kind of thing?
And if a yard crew
They don't like losing them.
They might have pulled it and not put it back.
That happens.
That happens from time to time.
Get thrown in creeks and bushes and all sorts of things.
All right. Gentlemen? Yes, sir. Mr. Cook, please come back forward.
This one comes back on April fifteenth, I think. Does that mean the sign would, would be up for fourteen days?
The sign will, the sign will probably stay there.
Yeah.
As opposed to us going and picking it up.
Basically we'll have to reorder signs for, for the new date.
I would, in other words, just so I can know what to expect, it should be up continuous weeks prior to the hearing.
Right, so it would go out for the April fifteenth meeting. It should go out March thirty first.
Okay. Paul, thank you.
All right, thanks, sir. All right, gentlemen, still need a motion to approve, deny, or to table until four fifteen?
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to postpone file RZ two one zero three zero six, major pud revision at forty five oh two Guilford Court to the April fifteenth planning commission meeting.
Do I hear a second?
Thank you.
Discussion? All in favor? Table until April fifteenth passes five zero. Mr. Butler, file RZ two one zero three zero seven, conditional use for massage.
The request for additional use at one oh six Davis Road, Suite D, currently zoned C two. Because we use for massage. His location of the property kind of is on the south side of Sheriff's Drive. And also touches Davis Road as well. And currently zoned C two, has everything around it. His location of the property, this is the building in question. And existing site. Also, well, should have had a plat there. So it's future land use. In terms of the, the request, again, they have a state license. They had to go through the MOU procedures on that. They are looking to operate, let's see, hours at ten AM to seven PM Monday through Friday, eleven AM and six eight, six PM on Saturday and one PM and five PM on Sunday. Again, everything around it is already commercial. It's also within the Modern Activity Center. So this type of use is perfectly acceptable in this location. The applicant or the owner has requested that the official use be limited to only Suite D. The staff is recommending a approval with the condition that the use for massage should be limited to one oh six Davis Road, Suite D located within the subject property. Includes staff recommendation.
Gentlemen, any questions to staff? Is the applicant here? Yes, ma'am. Would you like to come forward and give us any additional information? Okay. Well, come forward and give us, give us your name and home address and tell, tell us what you're about.
My name is Heather Gault. My address is thirteen Seventeen Road, I'm in Grove Town. Well, like two years ago and COVID happened, so all last year I was struggling to work. But now I have this opportunity. So I'd really love to get it approved and start working lives.
All right.
Do you all have any questions for me?
Thank you, ma'am. Gentlemen, any questions? All right, thank you, ma'am. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here that would like to speak either for or against this rezoning? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and accept a motion to approve, deny, or to table.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve with condition file RZ two one zero three zero seven, conditional use for massage at one oh six Davis Road, Suite D.
Do I hear a second?
Thank you.
Any discussion? All in favor? Motion to approve carries five zero. Massage away. Mr. Butler, file RZ two one zero three zero eight. And we do have a request to withdraw without prejudice on this, but we still will conduct the public hearing and accept any input from the public.
That is correct. So I'll kind of go through it a little quicker than, than normal. Again, location is off Old Augusta Highway. It's forty seven point nine eight acres, currently zoned RA. The request was to rezone to M two for proposed manufacturing use. His location of the property, one thing that is different about this than other properties in, in the area. This green color you see here is the City of Harlem. They have annexed property around this. There's still an annexation that has, or some more flats have to be done to make the annexation totally, totally finished. Gosh, I don't want to do it all. There's going to be a flat or a property created basically there to connect it back into the, the county. According to, according to both the City of Harlem and their attorney, annexation so far has been legal. We're waiting on a plat to be completed. And that should be totally finished from their side. Again, if we look at the zoning of the site, it's an RA currently across the, or basically the only closer, or the only closest county property. You have some RA here. M one along the, the, along the road tracks. That is a little surprising. I, there is several uses out there that are not M one. Most of them are not M one. There's also some C two. One of the things that was found during a review of this request, basically trying to figure out, you know, why? This has been here for over a hundred years. Why is it zoned RA? You know, according to what we can find, it was never zoned industrial. This area over here, however, was zoned that way in the seventies with or with the adoption of the initial zoning map for the county. That was apparently in practice. There's various instances of large areas being zoned industrial. One time the area around the, around the, the river, basically Hardy McManus, that whole area was zoned M one. That was all rezoned from M one to R one, basically, in the nineties. So it's, was a, was a problem for a while. But again, kind of trying to figure out what all occurred here. But again, according to our records, never been zoned industrial. Because our review of the site, again, it has been in use for industrial site in the past. And again, this shows the industrial buildings on the site. I believe it's a little over fifty five thousand square feet worth of industrial property or buildings on the side. This shows the existing site. It is accessed via a fifty foot wide easement that goes through now City of Harlem. But again, it's been there as far as we can tell since at least nineteen ninety five in terms of the easement itself. And the plat of the property again, showing the fifty foot wide easement and then the two properties that were the subject of this request. And again, we'll, we'll have some historic imagery provided by the applicant from the eighties. And showing the operation from two sides in this situation. Also from the nineties, basically ten years after this one, again, showing the property in, in use as an industrial site. And then from a future land use standpoint, this is within the Gordon Highway corridor, which is an employment corridor, which could have industrial uses on it. Again, we already have industrial in this whole area, industrial zoning at least. So again, from our standpoint, it was in keeping with that corridor. Again, the applicant has a request to withdraw without prejudice. Staff is in support of that and that concludes staff recommendation.
Gentlemen, any questions to staff? Is the applicant or a representative here? Yes, sir. Please come forward and give us your name, home address, any information you'd like us to have.
My name's John West. Lawyer with Larry Weston Huff. Address is one two two three George Wilson, Augusta, Georgia. But I spoke with Mr. Butler at length over the last couple of days. And we do request that the the applicant, Mr. Coleman, is here as well. As we began to discuss this application, I began to learn frankly that there may be some improvements property in order to, to apply with code regulations from RA to industrial. So our intention at this point speak further with the planning office, get more information about intent of the improvements that we've required. That is the, that is the intention behind the withdrawal. Wouldn't imagine that that would take, well, it will take as long as we need to get information. And I guess as opposed to the, that extent, it's up to the planning office. Direct us as to I wouldn't speak for Mr. Butler, but I wouldn't imagine that long.
Yeah, I would imagine the inspections department will be involved in this too.
Absolutely.
Okay.
It's, it's as much of a site improvement issue as it is buildings interior inspections report. So we'll be in contact with the applicant's representative to set up a time to kind of discuss all of the findings.
Sounds good. And by withdrawing without prejudice, that means once they get their paperwork done, they can come back at any time?
They could reapply at any time.
Gentlemen, any questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here that would like to speak either for or against this particular rezoning? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and accept a motion to approve, deny, to table, or withdraw without prejudice.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion withdrawal without prejudice. RZ twenty one zero three dash zero.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of the withdrawal without prejudice? Motion carries five zero. Ms. Montgomery, file RZ two one zero three zero nine.
Yes, sir. This is a request for rezoning at forty nine forty five Wrightsboro Road from R one Single Family Residential to M one Light Industrial and M two General Industrial. This is the location of the property on the north side of Wrightsboro Road, east of John Deere Parkway and the Grove Town city limits. And currently zoned R one Single Family Residential. It is kind of at the southern edge of a large industrial complex. And this is John Deere and the, the new building for them to the north. This parcel's recently been developed as well and was the subject of an earlier rezoning that included the, the rear portion of this property that we're looking at tonight. Properties to the east and south of here are primarily residential in nature, although we did have the commercial zoning here at the corner of Gateway fairly recently. This is the area of the site. It is an existing residence. It's currently vacant at the moment and the existing house. So we are, the applicant is requesting two zoning districts for this property. And while generally we don't favor split zoning, the reasoning for that is the property is intended to be subdivided. And this is the plat showing the intent. The back portion of the property would be combined with the adjacent M two parcel, which kind of squares that parcel up, gives it a little more developable shape and area. The front portion then would be just under an acre. It's not large enough to be an M two parcel on its own. So they are requesting M one for the front portion. Possibly be used for an office in the short term, maybe developed for office warehouse in the long term. There are several conditions proposed with the M two piece. The original rezoning for the M two to the north of this property had conditions on it. We carried those conditions forward. That's a couple of limitations on uses and some lighting requirements. Also, since this parcel is not a valid M two parcel on its own, it doesn't meet the lot requirements. We do have conditions regarding the plat being submitted to planning, to the planning department and being complete within sixty days. And also if they intend to use the existing house on the front parcel for an office in the short term, they will still have to develop it to commercial standards. So there is a proposed condition, just to clarify that, so everyone's on, on the same page with what would be required there. Wrightsboro Road is also slated to be widened in the future and traffic engineering has indicated that there would be a median in this section that would limit access for this parcel to a right in, right out driveway only. Since it is intended to be industrial, there's concern with tractor trailer access to that site or larger vehicles. So traffic engineering has a condition requiring interparcel access between these two properties. That would give this parcel the ability to kind of come through. However, their driveway and parking works and get out to John Deere Parkway to the lights and give them a little more robust access for that purpose. In terms of future land use, this is currently located in the neighborhood's character area. This area is intended for protection of existing neighborhoods and the development of new residential use. This obviously is not a residential request. But the extension of Gateway Boulevard down to Wrightsboro Road did change the character of this area as we saw with the, the recent C two rezoning and the development of the industrial parcels to the north of this property. These changing conditions are actually being reflected in the revision to the future land use map. This is intended to be, this area between these roads is intended to be folded into the Gateway Activity Center with the update to Vision twenty thirty five with these conditions in place. Staff contends that the, the rezoning is in accordance with the, those conditions. And staff is recommending approval with the conditions noted that the plat must be completed and submitted within sixty days. That the existing house would have to be developed to commercial standards if, if it is to operate as a business. And then the carryovers from the previous M two rezoning, the lighting requirement with the photometric plan and the prohibition of adult uses and exterminating, fumigating, and septic business services. And then the traffic engineering condition regarding interparcel access due to the, the proposed plans for Wrightsboro Road. That concludes staff recommendation.
Gentlemen, any questions to staff? Is the applicant here? Yes, sir. Would you like to come forward and give us your name, address, and any additional information you'd like us to have?
I'm Tony Atkins. This is mainly a digital piece of property that we bought last year. And we bought the back of it last year, originally a five acre. We bought the back of it and built a building for one of contractors. And the lady that lived in the house is ninety five years old. And the daughters wanted to get a commitment from us then to buy the house. We took an option on buying the house and passed away a couple of months ago. And so the back piece, the piece that we were going to get for M two is going to be adjoining that. be adjoining, as you said, didn't you, Danielle? And then the front piece, don't really know what we're gonna do yet. Tell you the truth, she's got so much stuff in there that I hadn't been able to see what the house is like. Don't know if we're gonna be able to use it or whether we're gonna have to tear it down. What, but that's, what we're trying to do is to just get it zoned properly so that we can use it when we get the chance.
Gentlemen, any questions? Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else that would like to speak either for or against this particular rezoning? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and accept a motion to approve, deny, or to table.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to approve with conditions, file RZ two one zero eight zero nine, rezoning from R-one to M-one and M-two at forty-nine forty-five Wrightsboro Road.
Do I hear a second?
I may, second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Approve carries five zero.
Have no text amendments, have no legal matters, uh, under staff and commissioner comments, um, I'd like to, uh, to, to ask Mr. Sterling to read some, some data for the records. We had, uh, a Vision twenty thirty-five update a couple of days ago, and there were some statements made that, uh, were, were in our mind questionable about the number of houses available, uh, for sale that were either, uh, new, under construction, or, uh, pre-sales. And I wanted to, to put, I guess officially in the record for folks to be able to see what, what your research turned up.
Yes, uh, as of this morning, uh, on Thursday, or, excuse me, March eighteenth, twenty twenty-one, there were a thousand four houses listed for sale in Columbia County, and as the chairman indicated, that could be new construction, that could be, uh, resales, uh, and anything in between, uh, lots. Um, so, uh, there were a hundred and forty-three less than two hundred thousand, um, in total out of that thousand and four units, three hundred and eighty-two were less than two hundred and fifty thousand, or thirty-eight percent of the current market in Columbia County. And of that number, five hundred and fifty were less than three hundred thousand, so just over half. Interestingly enough, of the thousand units that are on the market currently, a hundred and five are greater than five hundred thousand. So I think when we heard, we heard things at the public hearing a couple, um, last meeting, uh, for Vision twenty thirty, twenty thirty-five, excuse me, as well as Monday's steering committee meeting, um, there is affordable or market housing for, you know, a, our median income. And I think that's something that should be pointed out, that, you know, with our median income in the area of eighty-six thousand, give or take, you know, a two-hundred, two-hundred fifty thousand, three hundred thousand dollar home is kind of their top end range, and we have, you know, thirty, three hundred and eighty-some units currently on the market. Now, those may not all be new construction, but there are a fair number of available homes for sale.
Gentlemen, any questions? Thanks, sir. Uh, do we have any other staff or commissioner comments? Thank you, sir, for that data. Uh, we have no public left. Mr. Scarborough, I guess you're our only public. Do you have anything you'd like to add for the record? All right, thanks, sir. Well, that being said, the time of adjournment is upon us. Gentlemen, do we have a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Any discussion at all? All in favor? Motion to adjourn at six fifty-three PM. Next meeting is April first, six PM in these chambers. Thank you very much.